I call the Maplewood City Council meeting to order on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under
end with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct roll to ascertain quorum?
Councilmember Crossley. Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Canaper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips. Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Madam Mayor, Quorum is present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Crossley?
Motion to excuse Councilmember Crossley.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, Attorney Graves.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to request that the minutes of today's meeting reflect that pursuant to chapter six, ten, in Missouri sunshine law, this city council meeting may take place with the members of council not in the chamber, and the count members of council may vote this evening because there remains a pandemic, an emergency declared for the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney Graves. All right, Madam Clerk, item number six.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the council agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
Public hearing to hear citizens' comments on the proposed twenty-twenty-one property and personal property tax rate.
At this time, our attendees are welcome to provide any public comment regarding the proposed twenty-two thousand twenty-one property and personal property tax rates. And what you can do is there is a hand icon that you can click upon, and then it appears that your hand is raised, and we will get to you. Mr. Reese or Councilmember Fockingham, do you see any raised hands?
Not showing any hands, Mayor Canaper.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on then. Madam Clerk, item number eight.
Public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Darwin Property to rezone thirty-seven, thirty-two Cambridge from AB District to LR District.
Again, if any of our attendees would like to speak on this item, you are welcome to do so at this time. Please raise your Zoom hand, if you will, so you can be called upon.
Mayor Canaper, I'm seeing no hands.
All right, thank you. Item number nine, Madam Clerk.
Public forum.
Once again, our attendees are invited to provide any comment that they would wish to discuss, bring forward to council at this time. Again, please raise your Zoom hand to be called upon.
Okay. I'm seeing one, but it's Mr. Bowman, so we're, we're, we're gonna have him participate here in just a few moments in a later, later part of the agenda. I'm seeing no hands this time.
Okay, all right. All right. Madam Clerk, item number ten.
Announcement.
I have a few announcements. I just wanted, it's a reminder about the last chamber concert for the season is September twenty-second at Ryan Hummer Park, and the elected officials will have a booth there. And I wanted to mention that Deer Creek Bar and Grill opened September twelfth, the former cousin Hugo's, and it's still the great place. I went there on opening day, saw Councilmember Phillips there as well. So it's still the same place, and I'm really glad to have them back. They've been there since nineteen thirty-eight, so hated, hated to see them go, but glad they're back. And I did want to mention about Blue Duck Executive Chief Chef Trenton Garvey is the winner of the Hell's Kitchen reality show, and he's now the head chef at Gordon Ramsay Steak at the Paris Hotel in Las Vegas. So we certainly wish him well, but we're gonna be so sad that he's not gonna be here with us at the Blue Duck anymore, but it's a great honor to have him, have that win that. And that is all I have. Thank you, Councilmember Woods. Any additional announcements?
I have one. Tomorrow evening, Wednesday, nine fifteen, September fifteenth, at six-thirty PM at the elementary school, the Cub Scout Pack will be doing its school night to join scouting. So if you know any K through five people that want to hear more about our own Cub Scout Pack, almost hundred years in Maplewood, please join us at the elementary school tomorrow at six-thirty PM.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Any additional announcements? Madam Clerk, item number eleven.
Approval of the August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number twelve.
Board of Adjustment Housing Board of Appeals report by Patrick Juco.
Okay, we should have Mr. Juco with us. Patrick, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. I don't know if my video is working or not. I apologize. I never used my cellphone for a Zoom meeting before, and my, my graphic seems to be pretty static, but there's a good picture there, Patrick. Pardon me? So there's a nice picture of there, of you there. Yeah, I, I was trying to get the, the camera to go, but it's not. So in any event, you can hear my voice. My name is Patrick Juco. I am the chairman of the Board of Adjustment. Unfortunately, I'm traveling today. It was an unplanned trip, and I prepared an outline of what I was going to present to you, and I left it sit on my printer, and it wasn't saved, so I'm gonna wing it. I've, I've, I've been the chairman or I've been on the Board of Adjustment for over sixteen, seventeen years, since I think two thousand four. The Board of Adjustment is considered a quasi-judicial entity governed by state statutes. Its primary purpose is to consider variance requests from residents and petitioners, deviation from the Code of Ordinances, specifically the zoning, or zoning code, which is in section fifty-six of the Code of Ordinances. So the petitioner is required to submit application to staff. Staff compiles it, and ultimately, it is the petitioner's responsibility to prove that there's a hardship. And that's the crux of it. It can't be a whimsical request or motivation. It can't be an economical request. It must be a hardship. So if we take a couple of steps back and think about our zoning code, and when it was written, when Team Four was commissioned to put it together, I've been told, and, and the document itself certainly appears as if it was modeled from a suburban municipality's zoning code. And so being an inner core suburb, landlocked, and with quite a number of old, aging structures, a lot of these structures predate any zoning ordinance or the existence of zoning ordinances, so a lot of the requests we get for variance are pre-existing conditions in nature. And in order for a petitioner to receive a building permit, any non-conforming conditions have to be either resolved or granted a variance. And so a lot of times, we're, we're dealing with requests because of small lot sizes or lot widths, or a hundred-year-old structures being far too close to property lines. And some of it could be changed if the zoning ordinance was revised to reflect an inner core suburbs plating and configurations, but it's probably not necessary. Historically, we would meet, well, we, we, we do meet as needed. It's supposed to be the third Wednesday of every month if there's a petition. Historically, when interest rates were higher and when less activity was going on in Maplewood, we might meet two or three times a year. But these days, with all the activity going on, renovations, additions, purchases, reconstructions, whatnot, we're, we're meeting almost monthly. Our board consists of five members. We are supposed to have two alternates, but in my time, we've, we've, I don't believe we've ever had two alternates on the ticket. Right now, we have a single alternate. This becomes problematic because to approve a request for variance, we need a super majority. Our Board of Five panelists require four concurring votes to move in one direction or the other, or to approve, I'm sorry, four votes. So if one of our members is absent and and no alternate is available, we have to be unanimous. And so that's, that's not always optimal. We, we frequently give the petitioner the option to table their request for variance if we haven't been able to get five members present, and that has happened. So I would, I would encourage a second alternate to be, to be applied. I said that the, the board is a quasi-judicial entity. Everything that is spoken is recorded by a outside court reporter. All testimony is under oath, so every individual who speaks on behalf of a petitioner or from the public is sworn in by the court reporter. All the typical documents through stenography and notation recording are kept. Generally speaking, we are asked to consider requests for variances under five criteria. Whether the condition is unique to the property, will the condition adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners? Will the condition constitute unnecessary hardship for the property owner? That it will not adversely affect public health, safety, or general welfare, and that the, and that the request for variance does not violate the general spirit or intent of the code. Usually, that comes down to the petitioner needing to prove hardship, not just, like I said, it can't be based on economy. There's a more cost-effective solution, or they just want to do it. It's not a matter of whether they're improving the property or not. It's, it is really a litmus test of whether there is an actual hardship, which is frequently quantitative. Sometimes it gets a little qualitative. But usually, you can, you can stick to numbers and rational perspectives to make that determination. I, the Board of Adjustment also wears a second hat. Completely separate entity. Those members on the Board of Adjustment also serve as members of the Board of Appeal, Board of Housing Appeal. So if city staff makes a determination in interpreting the building code or some application, or the, the petitioner doesn't like a determination by Plan Zoning Commission, or even they could, they could appeal a Board of Adjustment decision. The Board of Housing Appeals is an actual legal proceeding, and yeah, case in point, if you were to search my name, Patrick Juco, on Missouri casenet, I would only have one entry. I've never been busted for shoplifting or speeding or any sort of issue, but I am listed in there for the one Board of Housing Appeals case that we heard back ten-ish years ago. So the, the petitioner, if he doesn't like the determination of city staff or the literal interpretation of the code, they can request deviation from that. We have the right to approve it. They bring attorneys, just as a court proceeding would be. The city attorney is present to represent city, and if we uphold the staff's decision, they can appeal it further to St. Louis County Courts, or we can overturn staff decision, but that, that rarely happens. So two different entities, the same members with two very different purposes. I think that's, that's about all I had to say. I'm happy to field any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Juco. Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
You are. Yes, Juco, J-U-G-O.
Okay. Thank you. So the first question I wanted to ask is, was there a combination or a combining of those two separate entities that you talked about because there was an issue with filling filling the positions for them? I guess I'm just trying to understand the, the, the combining of them.
I have no idea. You know, you know how the, the Design and Review Board also functions as the Historic Preservation Board? So very few people go before the Preservation Board because you're not tearing down structures that often. So it is a similar evaluation process along those same lines. A Board of Adjustment and the Board of Housing Appeals evaluate similar topics and, and have similar procedural formats. But I honestly don't know why the members of the Board of Adjustment also dual as the Board of Housing Appeals. It's just been that way since I've been on it.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question, and this is from an audience member. Could you give an example of a petition?
Oh, sure. I have, I have one in front of me, for instance. Individual wants to build a garage on a parcel. Say, for instance, this parcel is only five thousand square feet. Well, the zoning ordinance, single-family zoning ordinance requires the square footage, minimum square footage of a single-family residential lot to be six thousand square feet. Oh, our city was platted a hundred-plus years ago, and so you can't change that. That's one of those pre-existing conditions I'm referring to. Similarly, if a structure has been on a lot for a hundred years, and it happens to be only fifteen feet off of the right-of-way, well, the front yard setback in single-family residential is twenty-five feet. And so in order for them to get a building permit to put a new roof on or do a sunroom addition, they would need to get a variance to approve their front yard setback. Taking it a step further and forgetting about pre-existing conditions, maybe they want to build a garage which does not respect the five-yard side yard, five-foot side yard setback because their lot is only thirty-five feet wide, and they want to build a twenty-six-foot garage, wide garage, and so it's more beneficial for them to snug it closer to a property line. That would be an instance of a hardship, or we would have to consider how close is that proposed garage to the neighbors? Any, any of the neighbor's structures? Is it truly a hardship, or is it just a want and desire? Is it gonna save them money, and that's their only motivation? But frequently, on, on narrow lots, you know, the placement, holding a garage five feet off of one boundary on an extremely narrow lot does become or constitute a hardship. Or perhaps they have some topographical variation on their lot where the grade falls off heavily, and it necessitates that, in addition, be pushed over some degree and not respect the side yard setback. So there's frequently, unfortunately, we, we hear requests for variance on air conditioning condensing units. Because the, the zoning code is written as suburbanly, and it says there needs to be somewhat, something like fifteen-foot setback from an air conditioning unit to, to the neighboring properly, side yard property line. You know that very few of our lots in Maplewood, even at a fifty-foot wide, can achieve a fifteen-foot setback from a condensing unit on the side of the house. So frequently, we try to get them to locate the condensing unit in the backyard, where, as long as a basement exists and they can run the line set there. But sometimes, it's just not, it's not realistic. And so they, they have to be allowed air conditioning realistically, and the hardship is the narrowness and the existing position of their home, the narrowness of the lot and the existing position of their home. So those are, those are, that's one petitioner's request that I see in front of me from a previous month.
Thank you.
So I had a, I had a question. This is Jenny Schmidt. I, did I hear you say that it is possible for someone to appeal a Board of Adjustment decision to the Housing Board of Appeals?
I believe so. It's never happened, so I can't say that. I almost backtracked on that statement because I didn't know that for sure. Maybe, maybe the city attorney can clarify for me. But it's never happened since.
Because I, because I question was, what do you do since you're the exact same body? It would seem not.
And I realize that, Jenny, as I said that out loud.
Yeah.
I almost retracted my statement because it didn't make a lot of sense. I don't know that that's possible. I, I, the, the one, the, the, well, we've, we've seen two Board of Housing Appeals. One was kind of solved outside, but the, the one was, was, was a ridiculously wide garage, didn't meet code construction requirements, and certainly didn't respect side yard setbacks, neighboring property lines, and, and bulk area coverage. And they just wanted to do it because they wanted to do it, and wasn't, it didn't end up granting, wasn't granted, but
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Juco, for joining us this evening and providing the presentation.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number thirteen.
Presentation by St. Louis County Chapter of the NAACP President John Bowman.
Thank you. Mr. Reese, do we have Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Bowman, are you there?
Present.
We are not able to hear you. I believe you're muted, Mr. Bowman.
How about now?
Yes.
Does that work?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, distinguished members of the board. Thank you for your patience. I grew up in a generation who did their high school reports with a typewriter. So this is, uh, this is gonna be somewhat challenging, but I'll try to make this painless as I possibly can.
You know what? For me, Mr. Bowman, let me give you a proper introduction, okay, before we get started. So as, as you all see on our agenda, Mr. Bowman is the president of, uh, excuse me, give me just a moment. So for everyone, it is bedtime in the Canaper household, and you just heard my children. So yay. Anyways, so back to our distinguished guest. Mr. Bowman is the president of the St. Louis County Chapter for the NAACP or the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, Colored People. And this organization is America's oldest and largest civil rights organization. It was established in nineteen oh nine, and it was informed in New York City by Black and White activists, partially in response to ongoing violence against African-Americans around the country. Excuse me. I met Mr. Bowman a few months ago and was just talking with him about what I am experiencing as the first African-American mayor of our town, which is predominantly white. I have experienced, and I continue to experience, micro and macro aggression. And I also, in speaking with other African-American residents of Maplewood and some African-American business owners, and then also just some business owners of color, they are experiencing micro and macro aggression as well. And so I think the, in order for us to address these issues, we need to have a conversation about them. And so Mr. Bowman let me know that he he has these conversations. And so I invited him today to give a presentation on the St. Louis County Chapter of the NAACP. So, Mr. Bowman, thank you for joining us, and please take it away.
Thank you for having me. I, I, I must say, I am so mixed emotion right now because growing up in the St. Louis region and knowing that it's one of the most polarized cities in the country, to have a city like Maplewood to be willing to elect not only a person of color, but a Black female. I was just totally blown away and extremely excited about the direction that this is going, or was going, so I thought. But anyway, I'm supposed to do a presentation in regards to who the NAACP is and how we were created and what we represent. For those who do, who are not familiar with the organization, as the mayor alluded to, we started in nineteen oh nine, well, actually, in mid-back, we started in nineteen oh six with W.E.B. Du Bois and the Niagara Project. And the reason the NAACP was formed was to provide legislation against hanging. At that time, hanging was the, was the how can I say? It was the threat on human life that was treated with such a reckless manner that it took both Black, White, and people of other races to come together to speak in one voice against it. Because in most cases, that's how we have success, multi-generational, multicultural. And that is how we move in a more progressive way. But anyway, because of that legislation, we formed an organization known as the National Association of Colored People. It was reinforcing its actions through the riots in Springfield, Illinois. So over a period of time, there has always been this ugly head of racism that showed up that caused organizations like the NAACP to step into a space and be one of the strongest voices and one of the largest organizations in this country. Thank you very much for sharing that screen for me. I appreciate it. I am on my iPad. It's a little difficult. So that being said, as you can see, this is our purpose, to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of all citizens. We don't just represent one race. We represent all citizens, and our main focus is civil rights violation, equality, and fair treatment of all individuals. So the ultimate goal, as you all know, is to eliminate racial prejudice. And it is an ongoing effort, even to, to, to this date. But if I could get you, please, to move to the next slide. I appreciate that. This also explains what I had alluded to previously, who we were founded by. And as you can see, it was people of different races. Mr. Overton was Jewish, and the riots in Springfield in nineteen oh eight, the race riot, this was solidified the relationships actually very strongly between the African-American community and the Jewish community because they were being targeted with the same type of hatred and racism that African-Americans are and were. Can I go to the next slide, please? So our five major focuses are legislation, employment, due process, and the law. That's a very important one, due process and the law. In today's society, we're talking more in terms of criminal justice reform. But we still basically use the same tactics. Whenever there's an injustice, as Martin Luther King would say, anywhere, it's an injustice everywhere. So we use our tools and economic boycotts, and more recently, after the leadership of people like Thurgood Marshall and, and the legal geniuses of those types, we find ourselves in the courts quite often to resolve many of the unfair practices that still occur. And and this is an important, this is an important deal. and this is an important, this is an important vehicle to bring justice to those who don't have a voice. Would you go to the next slide, please? Bringing us up to date today. Over the past year, this pandemic has put us in an unusual space and the NAACP, the St. Louis County Branch, we sprung into action by addressing some of the voice that we were facing. Food and security being one, you know, without employment and the challenges that we all faced during the pandemic. We managed to leverage our legal powers and provide funding for those who were in need of assistance in many ways, even healthcare disparities. When COVID first hit, the testing of COVID was not that prevalent in the black community. So the NAACP, St. Louis County, and my board and its members decided that we were going to be very vocal about the fact that there was an institutional disparity in healthcare that was putting African Americans and people of low income and underserved communities at a higher risk. So we didn't just talk about it, we didn't just make a call to action, we actually rolled up our sleeves as we do and did the work ourselves. Over the past year, we impacted over three hundred thousand families by providing them food, nutritional food. We also provided PPEs, Pampers, as well as pushing government to make sure individuals were not thrown out and made homeless because of financial challenges. So the black community, as we see it, is still under attack in so many ways. And so we will not just quietly sit on the sidelines while this go on. We will have to organize, as we have in the past, with our friends of all colors, our generations, to make sure there's a balance in how our community is treated. Can I get you to move to the next slide, please? Thank you. I spoke about some of that earlier about us moving into spaces of inequities and how we addressed the pandemic. And I'm very proud to say that the rewarding that is being able to take care of your community and show them that there are people from the community who really cares. Can I go to the next slide? So no one acts in a silo in these organizations either. We partnered with some of the top leading journalists nationally and locally. We hosted informational panels with fraternities, sororities, and other organizations. That is how we were able to get a message out about the need to improve how healthcare was being distributed in certain communities. We partnered with great healthcare providers, FAQC's, I mean, federally qualified health centers such as Aphenia, K R C L, and even in the religious sector, the large churches, you know, we partnered with them to make sure testing and vaccination centers were open in our county. And we can move on to the next one, I think, yes. So to get down to where we are today and as president of NAACP, it's been my goal to make sure this branch, we discover this mission and place itself in a position to do the work that the people before me who showed us I stand on. That we are fulfilling that obligation to take care of each other and to be, and show more empathy toward individuals and me. So we still have a long way to go. But this organization has a, a spectrum of individuals, black, white, Hispanic. We are from all walks of life, legal, everyday working people, senior, middle class, and younger people. And we're engaged and we have a three-year strategy to make sure equality is distributed the way it should be. We are, we're not going to just sit on the sideline and tolerate the hatred and divisiveness that I have seen occur over the past four years and adopt that as a normal practice. We're here to support people who need help. We're here to support government when they're doing what should be done in the proper manner. But anybody who is treated unfairly and inequitable, the NAACP will come knocking. And I hate to say this, but in Maplewood, I have received a call from one of your residents in regards to her son being beat up by a thirty something year old white male. And I am disturbed somewhat, and I won't continue to be disturbed because if it comes down to me having to call my lawyers to intervene, I will do that. But I am extremely disturbed to know that the results of this, the parent, the mother, Ms. Jackson, doesn't feel like she is getting the type of response that she deserves. And as leaders of the community, and trust me, not only am I just the president of NAACP, I have served the city government. That's an alderman. I'm a former state representative. I know it's a very challenging and sometimes thankless job, but at the same time, when you decide to take this on, you swear to an oath to represent all people, regardless of race, creed, color, religion. So with that being said, I'm hoping, and also, let me, let me back up a little. I, I, I met Mayor Canaper who I am extremely, extremely impressed with moving into this space and trying to be a leader. Which in most cases, people would choose not to. But she has an extreme amount of integrity. I can see that she's passionate, really cares about serving the public. And there's not a lot of people willing to take that on. So I would hope that she would be given the same fairness and the same treatment as anyone else. And an opportunity to prove that she can lead this great city in the way that it needs to be led, but she can't do it without you guys. It's a team effort and I'm not gonna get into the political side of this because in my opinion, as a former addicted politician, I try my best to stay as neutral as I can anymore with politics because I look more toward finding public service these days. Anybody can do politics, but public service is a different animal altogether. So that being said, though, the mayor, I will be there to assist her at anywhere I can in the city of Maplewood. But if I get a call from your residents that they feel they're being treated unfairly and if it's driven by undertones of racism or inequitable treatment, that is when the NAACP will bring all of this weight to help, to help work out that situation. And we're not only the oldest organization, the largest in the country. We have very good lawyers and we are very committed to make sure that people are treated fairly. So with that being said, Maplewood, thank you for electing a beautiful person of color as your mayor. And you guys who have been in Maplewood and loves that city, you all, I wish you the best. And if I can be of assistance to you, I'm more than happy to. Mayor Canaper, thank you for having me here. And also, if you guys would like to get to know more about the NAACP, we are having our annual Freedom Fund Dinner, October fourth. You all are more than welcome to join us. Right now, our present action is vaccine hesitancy. We are running a vaccine hesitancy campaign three days a week to get proper information about the need to be vaccinated, to protect yourselves and your families. And if you guys need more information about that, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. I'll provide the city manager with that information. It's three one four eight nine nine zero zero three three. I think I have covered a lot of you guys' time right now. It's been a long day. But thank you for having me here. And once again, if I can be of assistance, NAACP is more than happy to do whatever we can to improve the quality of lives of all citizens. And so with that being said, Mayor, once again, thank you for letting me be a part of this meeting. And I am here to assist you in anywhere I can to make sure you have the opportunity to do what the people have elected you to do.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. I appreciate your presentation and the work that the NAACP does. And I, I want to let everyone know, I, I talked to Mr. Reese about Mr. Bowman joining us and I, I let Mr. Reese know if, and I'd like to let, I'd like to let our council as well as the community members that are watching right now and will watch later. If you have an issue or you find that there's an issue and you believe that you are being treated unfairly by anyone in our Maplewood city government, please, by all means, contact Mr. Reese. Because I already, Mr. Reese, I, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm just gonna tell folks what we already talked about. I, I let Mr. Reese know that I would let our community know, you can contact Mr. Reese and Mr. Reese is going to hear you and he's going to give you an opportunity to speak to him and he's also going to do some investigative work on his own if need be. But you can also call, call the NAACP as well. So again, thank you. Did anyone have any questions before, before he goes? All right.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, item number fourteen.
Library project presentation by Lorraine Frazier.
I'm gonna wait for Ms. Frazier to come on with us, but I would like to invite Mr. Reese to also participate regarding this item that's up for discussion.
Ms. Frazier, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I'm here. Good evening.
Welcome, Ms. Frazier. All right. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for doing this report. If you would, just reintroduce yourself to us and also tell us about your experience. I know that you were doing this for a school scholarship, correct? All right, go ahead and talk to us a bit more about that.
Okay. Well, first of all, it's an honor to be here tonight. I wanna thank the council for providing audience for me to share the work that I did practicing my emerging skills in my program and giving back to my community at the same time. So the Maplewood Public Library, of course, is dedicated to their mission to provide the community a diverse offering of materials and services. And this, this provided a thorough needs assessment to determine the actions required to restore the library building and ensure a safe environment for staff and community members. I understand that everyone has been provided a copy of this report and was able to review it prior to our meeting tonight. Yes. Great. All right. So who am I? Who is Lorraine Frazier? Well, first of all, I am a resident of Maplewood. I'm an MRH mom. I have a vested interest in the quality of our Maplewood Public Library as a patron and a member of our community. I hold two bachelors in business administration from Dury University in Springfield, Missouri, one in business management and the other in computer information systems. And like Mayor Canapper said, I'm currently studying at Boise State University in the School of Engineering in the Organizational Performance and Workplace Learning Department. And so the goal of this program is to equip me with the skills to identify, analyze, and solve a variety of human organizational performance problems in diverse settings. In these programs, students learn how to think strategically and design interventions that will address all of the factors required to achieve the desired results. So the opportunity for this project arose from a hometown challenge scholarship being offered by B S U's Career Services Department. And, and that's how I came to work on this project for Maplewood. This work was completed as an independent consultant at no cost of, of the city of Maplewood, nor with promise for continued opportunity or partnership. So what is a needs assessment? So a needs assessment is a systematic process of gathering information to analyze and formulate solutions that will address the goals of an organization. This project was identified as a need through collaboration with Mayor Canapper and and the director of the library, Director Ashley Bryant. She was vital to my learning the history of the library. The library board's Building and Grounds Committee and other library board members provided further context and support. So with a needs assessment, special attention is paid to the systemic nature of issues and how their causes are often buried under our immediate assumptions. Just like a doctor will look at many systems in the body to diagnose a cough, the performance improvement practitioner considers the many systems involved in an organization. So the systemic perspective leads to a better chance of finding the right solution rather than putting a Band-Aid on the problem. This can often uncover some uncomfortable challenges to work through, but commitment from both sides can ensure success. And as we all know, Maplewood is seeing a great number of new team members over the past year. So this is a perfect time to look to the future and work together for the benefit of the library and Maplewood as a community. So the following goals guided this need assessment process. First was to conduct gap analysis to identify the deficit between the desired structural integrity of the Maplewood Public Library and its current condition. Identify solutions to remediate the deficit. Review agreements between the city and library to strengthen that partnership and identify potential sources of funding to support remediation and renovation efforts. In keeping with the systematic and data-driven approach of performance improvement, the limitations of this needs assessment effort are explored. The main limitation of my study was really due to the tight schedule of eighty total working hours and limited conversations between myself and stakeholders. The smaller number of interviews make the data more subjective and raises the question of bias and feasibility of interventions. So all that said, I hope this will be viewed as a tool now in your hands that can help navigate the projects that you have ahead. As far as data, the data gathered focused on interviewing senior leadership and stakeholders within the city and Maplewood Public Library. Additional data was gathered by interviewing library directors from area libraries as well. A comprehensive review of applicable city and library documents was conducted to gather insight into the known history, opportunities, and operating constraints. External documents, including contractor reports, estimates, and agreements, sources related to external funding opportunities. All of these things were reviewed and the facts stated and assumptions made in this report are the result of objectively reviewing existing data, which is discoverable through the references and appendices of the report. So a bit of background. Established in nineteen thirty-five, the Maplewood Public Library is one of the oldest libraries in the St. Louis, Missouri region. The building itself has served as a regional gathering place for many purposes throughout its history. It was renovated in two thousand and seven to serve as the new home of the Maplewood Public Library, but the lower level flooded soon after. Since then, the library has struggled through multiple floods and disrepair in spite of renovation efforts. And now the library is faced with the decision of how to restore the building to its former glory. So after a thorough gap analysis using Thomas Gilbert's Performance So after a thorough gap analysis using Thomas Gilbert's performance matrix, the following interventions were identified. The first being to form a small work group to guide your plan. So the logistics of following a plan like this when outlined in the report is a big undertaking. And with respect to the fact that every employee already has responsibilities, no one person can be tasked with managing this project without hiring additional staff. An alternative to that would be to create a separate, small, balanced work group with representatives from both the library and the city. And this work group would help manage the timeline of the larger project and help spread out that workload. The group would also act as a communication bridge between the city and the library in hopes of bolstering communication. And members of this group would not be responsible for completing all individual tasks, but would help support the library and the city in their efforts to meet their mutual goals. Another recommendation is strengthen working commitment between city and library through review of standing agreements, draft processes and procedures for managing repairs. So a clear outline of responsibilities is really needed to provide clarity. Creating an official process to follow when repairs are needed at the library will help things run smoother for both the city and the library. And this should be a collaborative document that you make together that is officially approved by the library board and city council. And the procedural documents can be used as job aids for tasks related to the outlined process. And lastly, identify additional sources of funding. And far more research can be done in this area. However, one opportunity worth looking into is applying to add the Maplewood Public Library to the National Register of Historic Places. The state historic preservation office can conduct a free eligibility assessment upon request. And this avenue can open up opportunities for federally assisted projects, grants, and certain tax provisions and credits. Their contact information is provided in the report. So wrapping up, I believe that the city of Maplewood and Maplewood Public Library implement these recommendations. You will successfully restore the library to the level that will ensure the long-term presence of the Maplewood Public Library in its current condition, ensure the safety of staff and patrons, better serve the community of Maplewood through library resources and programming, and provide a systematic framework to allow the city and library to collaborate on unforeseen future needs. So I'm happy to answer any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier.
You're quite welcome. It was a pleasure to work on this. Again, I thank you for the opportunity. And I was happy to give back to my community.
Yeah, it's a great report. I haven't gotten through all one hundred and thirteen pages. No, thank you for doing this. This is great. This is just, it's just a nice, at least a starting place anyway. You know, to get the library back, back to where it needs to be.
Thank you, Councilmember Falkingham. That is my goal, is really just to kind of come in as an outside set of eyes, take inventory, kind of put it all together and give it back to you so that it's a tool for you to move forward in a positive way.
Mr. Reese, I know that you've reviewed the report. Would you please give us your insights?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Frazier and the council members. I have prepared some remarks here. So I have reviewed the report and rather than comment on individual items in the report that go back in some cases fifteen years, and I think in some cases are incomplete. Now is the time to step back, revisit the relationship, and form a new partnership. That's where I think this report is a tool, as was mentioned by Ms. Frazier and by Councilmember Falkingham. Like both parties need to put aside things that contribute to a poor relationship. Many of these things go back fifteen years. They certainly predate me. They predate the library director, the new library director relatively new. They predate many members of the current city council and library board. I share the same goals of the library, a safe, functional, and welcome building for staff and the public. I'm new and Director Ashley Bryant relatively new, so I think this allows us to start off fresh. In fact, during my second week, I called up Director Bryant to meet her and I took a tour of the library. I believe this is a shared responsibility for both the library and the city need to dedicate resources to fix the building. And as was said, I do endorse a working group made up of key staff where we meet regularly to address the building, the issues related with building. And also, as was said, I do believe a new partnership can put us in position to apply for some grant funding. Councilmember Page brought up earlier about opportunities for other funding. I think this is a great opportunity to seek other funding sources outside of the library, outside of the city. The one thing I would like to share is it would be my intention to not focus on the lease right now. I think that's a distraction from the serious and urgent issues of fixing the building. So it'd be my priority to focus on that. And those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. And Mr. Reese, I understand you also had a discussion with Director Bryant about that as well regarding the lease, correct?
I did. I did. And I think she would concur with us in terms of focusing on the building and the repairs that are needed.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much for that reflection, Mr. Reese. And I look forward to seeing what you all as a team do moving forward. So with that, I will excuse myself and again, thank you for this opportunity to meet with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri declaring that the second Monday of each October shall perpetually be known and celebrated as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Maplewood, Missouri.
I am going to read the resolution. Before I do, I would like to thank our Sustainability Commission as well as Councilmember Schmidt for working on this and creating it and bringing this to us so it could come to fruition. So thank you very much. Truly, thank you. All right. Whereas, the city of Maplewood recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations sponsored International Conference on the Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas, the city of Maplewood currently sits on land that is owned and occupied by the Osage, Kikapu, Miami, Great Sioux Nation, and Cascasquia. And whereas, indigenous people in Maplewood have, as in all parts of the Americas, endured centuries of cruelty, exploitation, and genocide. And whereas, facing and acknowledging our past, good as well as bad, makes our community stronger and more resilient. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri as follows. The City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri does hereby proclaim that the second Monday of each October shall perpetually be known and celebrated as Indigenous People's Day. And be it further resolved that the City Council, the city of Maplewood, values and recognizes the vast past and present contributions made to our community and country through indigenous peoples' knowledge, science, governance, philosophy, arts, and culture. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri encourages residents, businesses, organizations, and public institutions in Maplewood to also memorialize and celebrate indigenous peoples on the second Monday of October and to use this day to learn about and contemplate those lives who lived here before us and recognize the injustices of our past. Again, thank you very much to our community members that serve on the Sustainability Commission. And thank you to our councilmember, Councilmember Schmidt, for doing the work and creating and putting this together for us. I know that there was some collaboration between a member on the Sustainability Commission with you. And again, I just can't say thank you enough. This is awesome. All right. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Forgive me, I kind of had all of my discussion before and after the resolution.
I would also just like to thank Jonathan Spencer and the Sustainability Commission for not letting us drop the ball on this. They brought this up a year ago and we just lost it. And so I appreciate his persistence in getting this done, so.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Mayor Knapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-nine is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number sixteen.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing the city manager to purchase three police vehicles from Joe Maccansford Lincoln, Inc. by means of the statewide contract through the state of Missouri Division of Purchasing and Materials Management Cooperative Procurement Services in the amount of eighty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, conduct a roll call vote.
Mayor Knapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash forty is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number seventeen.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing the city manager to purchase twelve self-contained breathing apparatus units by means of the Houston-Galveston Area Council in the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say I appreciate for this one and the last one that they both came in pretty significantly under budget, which is always nice, so.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Mayor Knapper?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash forty-one is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eighteen.
Bill sixty-one sixty-nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri establishing the tax rate for the city of Maplewood and the Maplewood Special Business District on all real, personal, tangible, and intangible property within the city of Maplewood, Missouri for two thousand twenty-one.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Madam Clerk, second reading.
Bill sixty-one sixty-nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri establishing the tax rate for the city of Maplewood and the Maplewood Special Business District on all real, personal, tangible, and intangible property within the city of Maplewood, Missouri for two thousand twenty-one.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number nineteen.
Bill sixty-one seventy, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri to rezone thirty-seven thirty-two Cambridge Avenue from A B Arterial Business District to L R Limited Residential District.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm kind of glad we're going to make this residential. I've always been kind of opposed to the conversion because we have so much rental, but this one absolutely makes sense to me.
Thank you, Councilmember Falkingham. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Madam Clerk, second reading.
Bill sixty-one seventy, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri to rezone thirty-seven thirty-two Cambridge Avenue from A B Arterial Business District to L R Limited Residential District.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion is carried. All right, the third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twenty.
Bill sixty-one sixty-eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri amending Chapter Six Advertising Division Two permitted permanent type signs Section Six dash forty-nine Regulation B one wall signs of city code.
This is the final reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Mayor Knapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Ordinance number five-nine six-three is approved.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-one.
Virtual Town Hall Meeting Recap.
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, I just wanted to put this on the agenda for purposes of just a quick recap from my perspective. I want to thank you all first, the mayor council, for having the town hall on August twenty-ninth to introduce me. I also want to thank the residents of Maplewood who participated. I learn a lot from these type of forums and town halls. I look forward to more opportunities like this. You know, issues, quality of life issues, like public safety in our parks and our neighborhoods. Obviously, came through, it's important for me to get the perspective of the public. So I just wanted to mention that briefly and I don't know if anyone else has any comments, but that's all I have there.
Yeah, I thought it was great. Very informative. So, excellent. So, next time I'll do the rooms a little bit, break our rooms a little bit differently, but I timed it right on the money and I probably should have put some play in there just to give people another minute or two to you know, kind of finish up their thoughts, so. I'll do better next time. It's great, though, to get the smaller groups. That was really helpful.
I bet you did a great job, Councilmember Falkingham. And yes, I'm glad we went with the small groups. I enjoyed the small groups a lot. So yes, thank you for everyone that joined, that had the ability to join. And if you would like to view the Town Hall, you can. Mr. Reese, where can folks find that recording? Is it just on our YouTube page?
Yes, correct, it is.
All right. And then also, I believe there was a link to a brief survey that community members could take as well?
There was, and we have received quite a few comments from the public.
Is that link still operational?
I'll check. I believe it's still up.
Okay.
I'll check on that. So, I believe it still is.
Okay, all right. And we can, and community members can find that online?
They can find it online and continue to to provide their comments to us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Madam Clerk, item number 22.
Council Communication.
Any council communication?
I just have one thing I'd like to thank. Again, the our Community Development Director Laura Miller and our Police and Fire Departments for hosting and participating in the blood drive last Friday. It was a very successful drive. We had 50 donors, which is above the estimate that the Red Cross gives you for a first-time blood drive, so very successful. 50 donors, nine, only nine were turned away for being ineligible. And so that means they had 41 donations, successful donations that day. So, thank you everyone who came and thank you to everyone in the community who was eligible and gave blood that day, so.
I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Phillips, for organizing that. That was a great idea, so thank you.
Any additional council communication? All right. Madam Clerk, item number 23.
It's the mayor's report.
Thank you. I would just like to let everyone know that we are, Maplewood is officially a part of the move with the mayor campaign. We are the only municipality in the entire state that is a part of this initiative, so that's pretty exciting for us to be the first. And right now, I am working with two local businesses to have an activity, a physical activity for community members to do and participate in. And it is going to be yoga, either in the park or in some open space. So be on the lookout for that, but we have received confirmation from, excuse me, Urban Breath as well as Complete Harmony. So it will be a family affair. Children will be welcome to join us and practice yoga with us so we can focus on our health during this horrible pandemic. So, that completes my report. Madam Clerk, item number 24.
It's the city attorney's report.
Thank you. I have nothing to report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney Graves. Item number 25, Madam Clerk.
The city manager's report.
Yes, thank you. I have two items. One is concerning the municipal election. Just the announcement here. The petitions for filing for Ward 1, 2, and 3 for council member will be available Wednesday, September 15th of 2021. That's tomorrow. Filing for council seats in Ward 1, 2, and 3 will open at 8:00 a.m. on October 12th of 2021 and close at 5:00 p.m. on November the 2nd of 2020, 2021. A nominating petition must contain the signatures of 50 registered voters in the ward which you are running. If you're interested in obtaining a petition, you can stop by our front desk here at City Hall or contact our deputy city clerk at 314-646-3604. And that will also be posted on social media, on the webpage of our news and announcements, and there'll be an email blast that goes up. So that's it under municipal election. The second item, which was in your packet. I did, in response to prior dialogue that council has raised with me and in particular Councilmember Schmidt, I put together kind of a draft budget, 2022-2023 budget process. It mimics the 2021, the current budget we're in. But we've added a Town Hall meeting. Again, this is draft, which could occur in November to get input from the public. And then an opportunity for a work session or two in January to discuss budget and strategic priorities. And then by early February, council providing your top priorities to me and city manager so we can work to prepare the budget and finalize it. So, didn't know if there was any comment on that, but they want to be responsive to that issue of having a budget Town Hall.
I just want to say thank you very much for putting this together. I was really excited to see the opportunities for a council to talk to the public and then also to talk about strategic priorities before we get a draft. I think that's great. I think from, for us, for next steps, I think as a group, we would need to determine when that Town Hall would occur, because I would love if the timing works out to advertise it in the Maple Leaf, because I think there is one coming up. I think that would be a really great way to get the word out to like the larger community. And then I think the other thing we have to determine as a group is what that Town Hall looks like in terms of would it make sense to, similar to what we did with the prior one, but have smaller groups and are they focused around like types of, you know, parts of the budget, police, fire, those types of things. So it seems like those are the two decisions we have to determine relatively quickly, at least with regards to the date, so.
Yes, and I'll talk with, I don't know offhand what the deadline is for the Maple Leaf, Councilmember Schmidt, but I'll talk with you about that and if you'd like, we can we could, I could follow up and propose some dates and options and everything.
That would be great. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Madam Clerk, item number 26.
I'm sorry, public forum.
At this time, our attendees are invited to raise their hand and make a public statement.
Mayor Knapper, I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay. I would just like to answer an attendee's question regarding the breathing apparatus. I want to let you know Councilmember Falkingham responded, but I think it only went to the panelists instead of the panelists and the attendees. So I just want to share what Falking, excuse me, Councilmember Falkingham's response was regarding those. So his response was fire department uses them when entering house on fire or other situations that would be difficult to breathe in. All right, so I just wanted to let that community member know. A colleague did respond. All right. Madam Clerk, item number 27.
Motion to hold a closed session.
I understand that we do need to hold a closed session. And also, after we are finished with the closed session, we will not return to the meeting. May I have a motion?
Motion to hold a closed session to discuss matters relating to litigation, legal actions, and/or communication from the city attorney as provided for in Section 610.021, Subsection 1 of the Missouri revised statutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor? Excuse me, forgive me, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Mayor Knapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Council and I are going to go into closed session and we will not return. Have a good evening.